We're going to have to call the city council meeting of December 17th to order. Please stand for indication, Bobby Campbell.
Let us, um, thank goodness, have a moment of silence for the shootings and the deaths in Connecticut, if you would please. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for how you continue to watch over us. God, we do not understand, we don't have a way of understanding why the things happen, they do happen. We don't understand why anyone would ever want to hurt our babies. God, continue to watch over us and keep us blessed those families. Give them the strength they need, cover them, and always possible, help them to get through one day at a time, Father God, and help them to be able to come together as a, as a community to try to get through this tragedy. Help us to understand, even though we've got things going on, all the things we've got, we have in our community that we're dealing with, we still have to understand that life is precious. Our community is precious and all the things we do are, are precious, and we need to make sure we don't ever forget that and overlook that. Be with all our council persons, be with them. We thank them for the jobs they do. We thank you, then, for the hard work that they do and what they do for our community. But help us always to understand that we continue, we still need to keep the right things in front of us and the main thing, the main thing. That all the things we do in these meetings are things that we can deal with together and come together as one, but we still have to understand how precious life is. We, we pray for that community, we pray for our community, pray large to continue to watch over us and take care of us. Keep our community protected from dangers seen and unseen, and we ask it all in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Councilperson Smith.
Here.
Councilperson Payne.
Here.
Council Vice President Sellers.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Roberts.
Here.
Council President Sestodny.
Here.
Councilperson Julius.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
For the record, we reflect, all council members are present.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. All people of the agenda? We need to add, um, one thing for, um, Greg Seifer regarding...
Want to take your hair off?
Take your hair, yeah. Some software or some...
I don't know, sir.
Oh. This system gave me a jingle.
So I'll put that on eight. Okay, on the new business, about eight. Greg Seifer?
Yes.
We'll step through the changes.
One second. We need one, one other change we could. Under new business, we're going to move items number four and five. We're going to make those one. Number four is now number one. Number five is now number two. And then just fill in order up to that. So number one's three, number four, and then five. Six, seven, six and seven stays the same. Motion to approve the minutes with those changes. Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes to be approved.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the common council on December 3rd, 2012.
Motion to approve the minutes of, is that the December 3rd? Yeah. All those in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up, claims to be approved.
Um, the first item, I believe, is the parks claims, is that the first of seventeen thousand one twelve twenty-eight, specifically request approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the parks claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General claims?
Uh, general claims. Uh, the claim packet that was originally in your packet was, uh, has a couple of claims that are from wastewater, and although I'm sure that the steward would be grateful for you to pay it, I don't think you need to, um, approve those. Um, that would reduce the claims by one million, no, to one million, five eighty-one, one ninety-two, eleven, by removing those claims that are on the last page.
Mark, is that included in your handshake?
No, no. Yeah, I've got a separate signature sheet for that.
Can you repeat that? Five million, five eighty-one?
Sure. One million, five eighty-one, one ninety-two, eleven.
And that's telling now?
The two wastewater, yes, yes. Those don't require action by the council.
Motion to approve, on page six, First item, John Beer Financial for pruning and coffee cream. It's got to be something. Green and yellow packets?
Uh?
Green and yellow packets?
Green and yellow packets.
Uh, we would probably have a wrong vendor there.
I think it's green, aye.
Yes.
We might want to just correct that.
Okay.
Just stood up.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the general claims list for one million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, one ninety-two, eleven. Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, in the, I, I've notified you today that I had some hand-carried claims that, uh, you did get a copy of the packet. Um, these relate to a couple of items. Um, if you'll recall at the last board meeting, you approved the passage, I wanted to give you some background on this. You approved, um, closing a bond, or a fund that had fifty-five thousand dollars from NDOT. We are going to use that money to purchase some equipment for streetlights at Allison Lane and Holman's, um, their traffic lights. It's, the funds are related to it, and that was my recommendation to use those funds instead of just losing, dropping them into the middle of the general fund. They're, they're necessary expenditures, and we didn't have sufficient money in, at it to cover those traffic claims or elsewhere. Uh, the balance of those are coming from Board of Public Works and the traffic cabinets. If there isn't any questions on that. In addition, um, the council president Sestodny asked me to prepare claims to transfer funds for the additional appropriations to, uh, the Visine Park and C.S., CCSA construction fund, and that is the other two million dollars. Finally, there's a small claim that got overlooked, and I wanted to, it's, it's an old claim. It was dated from back in the summer. It was the purchase of the appraisal on the purchase of the property for the police station. So...
Motion to approve. I have a motion, second to approve the, uh, I guess hand, hand over...
Hand claims, yes. The amount is, I'm sorry, two million, sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-five.
Others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What? Tip claims?
Tip claims. Uh, these tip claims were approved by count, uh, the redevelopment commission last week. They amount to one million, ninety-eight thousand, seven nineteen and fourteen cents.
Motion to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the tip claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Others opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, mayor's conference. Is the mayor here?
Evening, everybody. Bobby, thank you for the words about Newtown, Connecticut, I'm sure. I speak for the entire city of Jeffersonville. I send these go out to the families and everybody involved there. Um, you know, the moment of silence was nice. Uh, there's tragedy, and then there's joy at this time of the season. I just would like to wish everybody a very merry Christmas and a bigger and better 2013. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, I'd love to take a second to recognize and thank Senator Jim Smith, that pointed out Senator on the round. Thank you, Senator Smith, for coming. Um, next up, report of the court.
None of us can.
Okay. Uh, next up, I know we have Judge Pierce here today. Judge, I think he's here today. Judge, would you like to say a few words?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and there's the council. Thank you for affording the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you several issues. I'll try and be brief. First of all, I would second the mayor's, uh, well wishes for the, the happy holidays. And also, I believe last time you, you, I guess, heard of anything involving me, it was about two weeks ago, involving, um, the probation fees and court costs and so forth when Mr. Roder was here. I will, I'm pleased to tell you that a resolution has been reached in that matter, and so I'm in the process of selecting, I believe, an architect to try and help with redesigning the office space down here so to accommodate everyone involved. That being said, there's also, and, uh, in the interest of remaining respectful, I just said it was mentioned of a possible third-party audit that was to occur. Um, I don't know if everyone's aware of that, but that audit is actually against statute. And, um, so I don't know that it can proceed. I'm not a municipal attorney, so I would defer to, um, the municipal attorneys that are here before you and figure out how to, how to proceed past this, to get that taken off the record or getting, um, essentially the order for that withdrawn. Um, and so I would, I would recommend that and ask for that council to proceed down that path, please. Lastly, let's see. That meeting occurred on December the third, and, um, I believe that meeting, uh, I watched that meeting on YouTube, and Mr. Lewis was told to contact my office or my attorney. Um, I did not hear from Mr. Lewis. I then, um, felt that I had to respond in some manner. I, I then contacted the newspaper, reported, reported the, uh, the story, and responded in that way.
When I contacted your attorney, you personally wouldn't contact me directly?
I don't believe, my attorney sitting right back there, he was not contacting Mr. Lewis. Can I finish, please, sir?
Yeah, well, again, um, when my name is mentioned, I didn't respond.
I understand, I appreciate that. And last time my name was mentioned, this changes, I wasn't even afforded the opportunity to speak. Now...
Drop your respect, Judge.
I understand, thank you.
Drop your respect.
And, um, thank you. Now, like I was saying, that occurred, I responded, and it is against statute that occurred. I would like to ask that be taken off the record. Now, on December the eleventh, I met at a meeting, I believe, with Mr. Samuel, Mr. Sestodny, Ms. Gill, Ms. Sellers, I believe, Mr. Lann, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Conlon was there, Mr. Roder was there, my attorney was there as well, and so was, and so was my, I was as well, I'm sorry. All right, anyway, we met, we reached a resolution. Immediately after that meeting, I came downstairs to my office down here, the court office, and was informing my staff that my 2012 financial records were missing. Okay? My entire 2012 records for probation department and court department, okay? There's twenty books, twenty of these, okay? Now, I asked my entire staff if they had any knowledge of this. They all said no. I said, "If you feel like you do have knowledge, you only present that in front of the rest of the staff. Please contact me. I have my cell phone number." I was not contacted. Later that evening, it was a Tuesday night, later that evening, I contacted Chief Graham and Detective, Chief of Detectives, Bobby McGee, telling them that I believe there's been, something's wrong in the courthouse and City Hall, and that I'm going to probably need to contact them about this issue. I also contacted the head of the communications, not the communications department, I guess, the electronics department, Mr. Dyer, okay? The next day, I talked to my staff again, asking, "Do you know where these documents are?" They said, "Do you know?" "I do not." So, "Okay, I'm going to file a police report." I asked one of my staff members to contact Ms. Harmon, if she knew where they possibly were, since she's the city controller. I was informed she did. I then contacted Ms. Harmon. "I appreciate your candor, Ms. Harmon, and your honesty with me." She said, "I do have them." And I said, "Then ask, "Well, when did you receive them?" She said, "On the morning of December the fourth." I was pulled out of a meeting, a union meeting, that morning. I then asked, "Who presented them to you?" She told me it was Ms. Conlon. Okay? Now, I apologize for putting you guys in the role of this. I never intended for that this entire year. I did not intend to put you in the role of this. I've been here five years. This is our second appearance, I think, before the council, and you saw the first a couple of months ago, okay? I try not to involve y'all in any of this. Now, but since we've made this, the principal's office is going to come before you with these issues. Next, I then contacted the state level accounts. I sent a letter to the state level accounts, I sent a copy of that letter to Mr. Sestodny, also to the mayor, to Ms. Conlon, and to all council involved, indicating to the state level accounts, "I need to know how to proceed. My documents have been compromised." Okay? I can now trust the authenticity of these documents? And since at the very beginning, just part of this, my integrity is questioned on the handling of these books, so much so we need a third-party audit. Contacted the state level accounts, I'm still waiting for the head of the state department of accounts to contact me with regard to that, it was since certified. Karen Keller, who did contact me, I said, "Karen, what do I do?" She said, "Well, I've been doing this, I don't know how many years, and I've never heard this happening before. I report to the authorities and wait for the head of the department, of state level accounts to contact you." So, I have reported to the authorities. I'm asking for investigation to be done. Now, I have no idea why these records were taken. I don't understand it. There's a proper process for receiving records. I've asked my staff numerous times what happened, they have no idea. I've released it to the authorities with that, with that in mind. I asked them that letter that all documents are returned to my care at the closing business on December the thirteenth. They were not. Now, only one offer was made to return those documents, and so I sent one of my office managers up there to retrieve them, and she was not afforded the opportunity to take them with her unless she signed a release. And those documents were not taken, were not taken from me with any release. I'm refusing my permission. I believe we've gone with the word is means here several times. The judge is the custodian of various of the probation department records. And at this time, the judge is the custodian of all the court records, as my office has been keeping them all year long. Okay? This is unethical. This is reprehensible. Okay? So, I haven't left no opportunity. These documents now are out of my care for the past two weeks. So, I have before me a proposed litigation, it's a request for it to be proven, for those documents to be returned to me. My attorneys advised me to file it immediately. Okay? Now, in the interest of goodwill and good faith, and also the holiday season, I'm coming before the council to make this very clear. I'm still holding these documents here. So, with whatever power and influence or authority you guys have regarding the original issue, any direction you could give to get these documents returned back to my office before nine AM tomorrow morning, will void and avert this lawsuit, and obviously more embarrassment for the city. Okay? Five years, I've not done anything like this. So, all I'm asking for is a little cooperation. I'd like those documents returned. If they're not returned to my office by nine AM tomorrow morning, then by ten AM, this will be filed. Okay? This does not mean the council, it means no individual member of the council whatsoever. Okay? Ms. Harmon's the last person I know, I know that had actual charge of these documents, it names her. Based on her conversation with me, she says Ms. Conlon had, had contacted them as well. That's fine. So it names both those parties. If any of my staff was involved in it, I have no problem. They will lose their job immediately. I say this before the council, they will be terminated immediately. That's fine with me. Okay? I should at least be able to retract from myself, and they should do the same for me. So if they're not going to do it, then believe me, I'm not holding anyone back here. Okay? So, if the council has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I appreciate your time. Um, but I guess really the only, real true act I'm asking for from the council is that we withdraw the order for the third-party audit. Other than that, because it's my understanding, if it does go through, then I think, without the state level account's approval, then possibly we could be personally out with that money, and I'll probably frankly, no, I'll pay for it.
I think we'll, we'll take that into consideration, and I, we didn't, I didn't know, we didn't know that the question would be here, so I'm sure we'll talk to our council and keep that consideration.
Thank you. Happy holidays, guys.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Department of Health reports. Is anyone here, any department units? Come on up. Chief Graham?
I have one request. You guys passed an ordinance for any purchases over five thousand to be approved through the council. We have one request, and it's getting towards the end of the year, so we want to make it now. We had, you know, had come to light with certain criminal activity in Jeffersonville that our detective division was very lacking in a certain piece of equipment. Uh, the piece of equipment is a, is a dry safe cabinet. Uh, what the dry safe cabinet is, is just a cabinet where, where clothing can be hung or large articles to dry. Um, right now, to dry those articles, they either hang in our detective's office or downstairs in evidence, and it's not real safe for by guys and for the building in general, and it doesn't smell no good, so...
Is the money within your budget?
Yes, and that's, the money would come out of the SWAT load account. We had about nine thousand, fifty-five dollars remaining in there. The actual purchase price of the equipment is eighty-one hundred dollars. So, we're just asking for approval from the council to use the SWAT load money to purchase it.
Motion to approve, second. Motion, second, to approve that purchase. Any others discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other departmental heads here today? All right. We're going to go to, um, first business, Mark Harmon, um, 2012 OR 62.
Um, this was passed on first and second reading. This was to combine the non-reverting funds into consolidating them for the police.
Hasn't been changed.
That was unchanged.
Motion to approve on the final reading. Second. I have a motion, second, to pass 2012, um, OR 62 on the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye. Opposed? Next up, is Harmon, 2012 OR 63.
This offer was passed on only the first reading. I believe there was some questions that Mr. Lewis was going to investigate on behalf of the council. There had been no changes on my part. The intent was to consolidate these, uh, these, all these parks ordinances into one non-reverting, excuse me, these park, non-reverting funds altogether, and recount for them by department within the fund. That is, and merge those, those cash funds into one fund itself.
Make a motion to approve on second reading. Second. I have a motion, second, to pass 2012 OR 63 on the second reading. Any other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Lewis, have you had time to review it, or?
Well, I think what my recommendation was, is the same thing that we did on the other ordinance, where instead of repealing the entire ordinance, we were just, uh, we were just, um, getting, getting rid of the other funds to create the new non-reverting fund. That was what my recommendation was.
So at this time, it's good to do the second reading, and then we can come back for?
Yeah. I mean, that, because we did that with the other ordinance, where just the provisions regarding the funds were being repealed, not the entire ordinance. So that's what we did for the OR 62, that was our recommendation to OR 63.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Harmon, 2012 OR 64.
Uh, yes, um, the ordinance that you had before you has been passed on the first and second reading. I had since sent out, and, uh, Ms. Conlon made copies for your packets late to, that were mending the attachment to that. These reflect, that's, this, yes. The number that you should, to be certain, you are looking at the correct one. Orphans compensation, um, about two-thirds of the way down should be a minus one ninety-five, three hundred, and the total net would be zero. What we're doing is moving money from one budget line item to another. Uh, this should get us cleaned up for the year, um, and reflects all the departmental transfers between items and such.
Is there not a net positive or negative in this transaction?
Uh, no, I just, I just left money in the, the insurance funds for what we didn't need. We still have some excess money in the council budget in those two line items, so...
Great. So the spread is attached here to the...
Yes, so the handout, separate handout is, that's no longer second, correct.
This is valid.
As a matter of fact, another way is I went in and typed sixty-four at the time, and I think the previous version had a written number.
If you're going to entertain a motion. So the one you gave us that is stated here is not the valid one?
Correct. There was a hand one in it, uh, that was handed out that's the correct one.
It's typed sixty-four.
This got distributed, I'm going to say about noon of the day. Wasn't that about right, Vicki? I think I had it around one when I heard it.
Motion to approve, 2012 OR 64 on the third and final... Second. A motion, second, to pass 2012 OR 64 on the third and final reading. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, signify the sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, redistricting. Dennis Lewis.
Zach had brought redistricting up last week, showed us a map and different things, and uh, I know that I met with Bruce Hope earlier this week, or late last week. Uh, Bruce wanted to get on the agenda to show his plan. I haven't seen Bruce yet, but Bruce is here. And, um, I just want to say, I'm, I'm not even going to send Bruce's car on or whatsoever. I tell Bruce I would get him on the agenda, and, and that's what I'd like to do.
So Bruce, you want to?
Evening. Evening. I appreciate the time tonight. Um, I think each one of you in your packet got, uh, the details of the plan that I would like to propose as an alternate to, uh, what was introduced at the last meeting. Um, first of all, I, I have a question. Ed, are, are you supposed to be in precinct fifteen or eighteen?
I live in precinct fifteen.
Fifteen.
But there's, yeah, there's an error.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I called down.
Can you be corrected?
Yeah, I, I called down to lower registration. They said same thing, they had you in eighteen, so, uh, just wanted to be clear on that. Uh, the plan that I put in front of you does two things. It creates more equal districts than the plan that was introduced at the last meeting, and it doesn't split any precincts. Uh, last week's plan splits two precincts. Uh, the deviation, I think, was over, uh, eight percent. The plan I've got in front of you has a deviation of seven point six, two percent, splits no districts. So I'm encouraging the, uh, council to adopt the plan that I'm putting in front of you tonight, because it more closely, uh, adheres to the statute, and it more evenly divides the district. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Nope.
I had a hard time seeing that one.
Some, some people are seeing it, they're having a hard time seeing it. Do you have any kind of, like a color or any particular presentation?
Oh, yeah, I have a color map.
Do we have a way to put it on?
Any other questions?
Okay, I'd encourage you to pass this plan instead of the other plan. Like I said, I think it, it's, uh, more closely aligned with the statute, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, uh, councilperson Payne. Ordinance, redistricting. I'm in council districts.
Last type of plan, Chris, last come up?
I'm just going to introduce. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, in our last meeting, we introduced, um, ordinance OR 67 for the redistricting. And when it was originally submitted, we, uh, there were some corrections, I think, that, uh, Mr. Booker made from JTL, that the, the air, the data was incorrect on some of those precincts. So that's, the, the, those are the correct precincts for the proposed districts, and since the last meeting on the map... And since the last meeting on the map, I know Mr. Booker, um, has, we, we actually meant to tweak a couple of those, uh, districts. The, the proposed precincts, how they're distributed throughout the districts has not changed, but there was a couple, um, areas within, uh, the, the precincts that did change, that actually has got the total deviation down below five percent. So, it's, it's actually tweaked where it's actually better than what was presented before. It's a little more compact, um, and if Mr. Booker wants to come up and explain, maybe a little bit, remind me, please, I have a piece in the map.
Good evening. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and put the map up.
Turn around so you can see it? Could, could you turn it around so that the council could see it for just a little bit? I'm going to turn it around.
Lisa.
Lisa.
This is the wall, thirty-nine degrees north, and this is where he is. So, we could start, I suppose, to put it up there. Would you like us to go down the screen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everybody, we all.
And then I, with me, I had Chris Walls with thirty-nine degrees north, which we worked together with to help the council create the districts. So, if you'll give us just a second.
Well, I know plenty of the map, um, and you go ahead and explain kind of where we are since the last meeting, council meeting.
Well, since the last meeting, the only changes have been, basically, the, uh, the boundaries between District One and District Two have changed slightly. There was a split precinct between, uh, Jeff Six. Um, basically, District Two picked up a little bit more of Precinct Six, District One lost a little bit of it. Uh, that had to even out the population. Um, and between District Three and District Six, um, they, those two districts split Utica Two, and in this revised proposal, District Three picks up more of Utica Two, um, and District Six loses a little portion of it. So, that takes the, um, the deviation between the smallest and largest districts from eight point two-five to four point s-?
Thirty-three.
Three-three, four point three-three.
Correct.
So, it's under five percent.
Yes, so, Mr. Payne, we used to get back together and to revisit the map, and we did that, and some slight changes were made to actually even out the population a little bit further to a deviation of four point three-three overall. Uh, we are splitting precincts, which is allowable. Let me just, let me just say that, obviously, the statute does allow precincts to be split, um, with, if, if, there's no other way to get as equal, as close as possible population between the districts. Um, but with the, with the goal line is going to try to split census blocks, that's even more taboo, so to speak, than, than splitting precincts. I think if you just note here, the three precincts that are listed that are being split, you've got Jeff Little Six, Utica Two, and, uh, Jeff Twenty-Four. And I think what everyone needs to understand, the council and the public, that on, I believe it's Utica Two and Jeff Twenty-Four, the reason why they appear to be split is because the way the commissioners and the state election division, as they approve those precincts, which are done exclusively by the commissioners, those precincts themselves are semi-split. They're, 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 there's like, basically a road, and I, I don't know if you can, send, I'll show that closer for everybody, but they're basically, uh, Jeff Twenty-Four and Utica Two are kind of divided themselves, and they're just connected by some little thin road. So, if you do not split Utica Two and Jeff Twenty-Four, if you try to keep those precincts together, then you're actually creating non-compact districts due to the way the precincts are. So, I think in essence, really, it's part of, um, Jeff Six that is really the one that's being split, because we really have no other choice with Utica Two and Jeff Twenty-Four. The way the precincts were done by the commissioners and approved by the state, like I said, if we had Mr. Booker, or, or show that's kind of what we're talking about, give everyone an idea.
So, there's, there's Jeff Six being split. You see that one that says fifteen hundred ninety population? Um, it's green and purple. It's split right there. Usually.
Where's the rest of it at?
I may not see that part, where's the other part?
That's the entire, that's, that's the entire precinct right there. That, that color is you, that other color is, is Ed, purple's Ed.
I'll highlight that precinct for you.
That's, that's the entire precinct, and the two colors are where it's split.
Ah, I see. And without, without splitting that different precinct, the way we were, the way they were trying to work the districts is that the deviation would have been up eight, nine percent. So, the way this current plan is, it's getting under five percent. And I know back in two thousand ten, when the council did the first redistricting, deviation, I believe, what was the deviation among the districts then from the two thousand ten plan? From the two thousand ten plan that was based upon two thousand census numbers? Sure, so what was it? Yes, we, we were right at that ten percent mark. Ten percent mark. Just barely below it. Which was approved, I mean, that map, the, 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 so forth, or? Everything. I said it was approved, but of course, with the new, sure, two thousand ten census coming out, we had to revisit. Sure, so the point is, a plan that was approved back in two thousand ten, that, that met our legal requirements with almost, an almost ten percent deviation, this plan, now is under five percent total deviation between the four districts, which is, in this business of redistricting, is extremely low number. It gets as close really as possible, they have almost equal population among all the districts. Um, I know Zach had spent a lot of time, and we had met with our consultants to go through all the population census blocks, and we spent a lot of time to follow the law, and with the precincts that were split, like I said, two of them were due to the nature of how the precincts currently are not valid, which I feel like everyone has seen Jeff Twenty-Four on your computer, show how those are kind of stretched out.
So, that's Utica Two.
Utica Two.
The two highlighted, two highlighted areas are actually Jeff, um, Utica Two. So, they're, they're not even touching.
Yeah, so, and we have no control over the precincts. We're bound to accept how the precincts are, as approved by the commissioners.
Correct. Ed, if you want to go over to Jeff Twenty-Four?
Twenty-Four is even worse.
Jeff Twenty-Four is definitely worse. That's Jeff Twenty-Four, but, uh, I'd say, yeah, it's square.
Yeah, so you're saying it's square, it's, uh, it's square on the left. If, if, like, you tried to include that up here, then you're going to have that little teeny part of Jeff Twenty-Four surrounded, almost.
One hundred people, yeah, being represented by.
Now, that wouldn't make any sense to do it that way, and I have no idea why the precincts-
So, we could ask the county commissioners to claim, tell them it's not maybe? It's, it's under their jurisdiction, I'd say.
They made a precinct, uh, you know, their company did those, the commissioners, and that was already approved by the state election division, so I'm not sure on those, of those to be cleared out or not, because they were being approved by the state.
Not anytime soon.
I believe it justifies those, those two different precincts being split because of the way those institutions are structured.
And we, we need to do this, um, before the end of the year?
Yeah, certainly, against that, you, uh, the district.
First reading?
Uh, this year.
So, wait, and if, so we need to pass this on, on their reading, then?
Yeah, we introduced it on a first reading. And it would be, and it would be, it would be amended, because what we're doing, actually, uh, the, the numbers of the precincts, the finished district has not changed until we introduced, followed on the first reading, which, which changed are the maps. We've, we've slightly shifted some of District One, District Two. So, so the map is different than what was introduced on, when we introduced it at the last meeting. And we actually, and by making that slight change between District One and District Two, we've realized the population of the war. We went from about eight point five to maybe-
You were right at eight percent.
Yeah, eight percent to four point three-three. So, we actually, we've got a slight adjustment from last time, we've actually got that closer deviation of population.
Pro, proclaiming, Tom?
Yes.
What's in our packet is correct?
Yes.
The, the maps are not correct.
Yeah.
Our, our package should be from, uh, before, uh, we met, and, uh, districts and the population closer to you.
I don't have the new maps on here, I wasn't receiving yet. And I don't know about the ordinance, because it's still that, where I crossed out.
The ordinance is still correct, um, how, how it's written. It's correct with the adjustments.
Big black hat on, please.
Oh, okay.
I believe, was this, was this, we did give the one, was this the one with the correction, the tweaks of the, because I think it's part of the intention.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes. So, this was, this was a clue.
Okay.
So, this, this is correct.
I made a motion to pass, uh, ordinance number sixty-seven, uh, with the adjustments that are written here.
Second.
Is that in second? It's in second, reading second for reading.
The motion is second to pass two thousand twelve, OR sixty-seven, on the second and third reading. Any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. Uh, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And, happy hour, Ed.
Yes, Chris. Thank you. All right. Mr. Mercury, you're next up.
Uh, Wes Mercury, uh, resolution, county council of Jeffersonville regarding the amendment of the inner-city road economic development plan.
You have in front of you two resolutions that are along the same lines. Um, as you know, last year, the city council passed a, and the redevelopment commission passed a bond ordinance. Uh, at that time, the bond ordinance, I believe, was to be issued at, and ran around twenty-one million dollars. Um, what redevelopment commission has done since then is divided that into two separate issuances, with the first issuing power to go for reimbursement of TIF dollars that had been expended by the prior administration to purchase, uh, property in the downtown area. Um, and that is the bond, uh, that we're hoping to close on by the end of the year to replenish the TIF districts, uh, of the dollars that had been expended, specifically Falls Landing, uh, money that we tell you will be in the negative at the first of the year, so, the administration believes that it's important that we get these monies back in. But in order for us to close, we're doing some housekeeping items that unfortunately, um, were not done by prior bond council, um, which since, we have changed bond council, and we believe we're doing this the correct way now. Uh, we, what we're doing is, in order to use TIF dollars on, uh, projects, the Indiana State statute requires that the economic development, uh, plan for those TIF districts must include a project that you're going to use the TIF dollars for. Uh, specifically, we are asking that the TIF, or the economic development plans, both for the inner-city road and the Falls Landing area, be amended to include the stormwater conveyance system, which despite, um, spending nearly ten million dollars out of TIF dollars for a two-year period, and, um, also passing a bond ordinance, um, to reimburse those dollars, this step was never done, uh, despite being required by state law to include, uh, the project, the stormwater conveyance system, both in the inner-city road, uh, development area, and the Falls Landing area. And what we're doing is, the safe, um, more paper that we have to do next year in anticipation of the police station bond, which would be backed up by TIF dollars, we went ahead and also included the police station as a project, both, for both of these development, uh, plans. So, what we're doing here is, we are mending two plans to include the stormwater conveyance system and the police station. So, also, in the Falls Landing, uh, we're doing one other thing, that's recently, it's so, it's longer than the other one, is that in two thousand and six, a bond was issued to construct the, uh, two fire stations and also the city garage. At that time, um, bond council and financial advisor at that time, um, pledged, um, revenue from all TIFs in existence, and of all future TIFs that may be created. I don't believe that was the intent at that time, when that bond went through. We are cleaning this up, and we are clarifying that we're only pledging the Falls Landing and the inner-city road TIF. So, and that's, we believe, will help us in the long run for any future projects, because that's not going to count, count against us any other TIFs that we may create in the future, or the other TIFs that are out there that we are not using for those projects. So, two resolutions.
I know, I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, where it says, uh, now there will be reserve of county council of Jeffersonville, city of Jeffersonville, Indiana, but the two thousand twelve plan and the resolution are all respects hereby approved or affect confirmed by the council. Well, the, the two thousand twelve plan, what is the two thousand twelve plan?
The two thousand twelve plan is what's before you. The police station and stormwater conveyance.
It says two items.
Yes, because how, how this process works, to amend the plan, it starts at the redevelopment commission, which they did, then it goes to the planning commission, for some reason, statute requires for the planning commission to sign off on this, which they did. Now it goes before you for the two thousand twelve plan, and if you all approve it, then it will go back to the redevelopment commission for a public hearing on December twenty-eighth, and then redevelopment commission will confirm your all's decision, and then we can proceed with closing on the bonds.
I know, I know, some of the consultants in the council, at least some of the folks I've talked to, is that, in, could, can, um, agreeing with the plan, I guess, with the question, what's included? Just includes those two items in this case.
The amendments, go, go.
So, in order to spend other TIF dollars on other projects down the road, will there be additional amendments to the plan?
If, if, if there are projects that are, that are wanting to be done, that do not meet what's in the plan, yes. And, to answer, to answer, to answer your question, we've had Ice Miller look at the existing plans, and again, keep in mind that until, until two thousand and eight, the council didn't have to do anything when it came to amending a plan, which is, which, I'll be honest with you, was not aware of until Ice Miller pointed out, because I was attorney until two thousand and eight, and they changed the laws. And up until two thousand and eight, it only took the redevelopment commission to amend the plan. So, we've had Ice Miller look at the existing plans, and I know the projects that you're on, uh, referring to, none of those projects would meet, meet the descriptions under the current plan, plans for Falls Landing or inner-city roads, so, they would have to come back before the council to amend it.
Can you, can you, Wes? I just want to ask Wes, Wes, I'm just kind of curious, just why, I mean, when you're proposing a proposed resolution for the council, you refer to the two thousand twelve plan before amending an existing plan, wouldn't it fall for someone?
There is no two thousand twelve plan, I know that.
There's what?
There is, I mean, this is the two thousand twelve plan, there is no two thousand twelve plan. There isn't a two thousand eleven plan, there isn't a two thousand and ten plan either.
Well, man, if we're amending an existing development plan, shouldn't we be-
There is, there is, you are amending an existing, there, there has been an existing development plan for the Falls Landing TIF since it was created under a day or a while. There has been an existing economic development plan for inner-city road, which now we call Veterans Parkway, since it was created under Buddy Parker, or it might have been Tom's first term. So, there are plans there. They are very narrow in description. Uh, Falls Landing speaks basically to riverfront developments, the harbors and all that down there. Uh, Veterans Parkway specifically just refers to the infrastructure along that.
I guess, I guess my question was going back, is there just about one original plan, that every time it's amended, refers to the amendment of whatever the, maybe the original plan is? Or every time you all amended, already called it?
Uh, we, we, we-
You see what I'm trying to say?
If we, if we, if we amended next year, it's going to be the two thousand thirteen plan.
I mean, I guess, and I guess, like, as I stated myself, as I'm trying, I just want to be sure, that, I mean, there could be an interpretation that you're approving a two thousand twelve plan in addition to approving the attachments, like the specific project in the exhibit, which is intercepter, stormwater, there's other project, and the, um, police station.
I, I understand, but there is-
I think if it's true, is that there's this other two thousand twelve plan, that they include things that are not in these legal description exhibits, as far as what the projects are. I think that's all we, we want to clarify.
Has, has the plan, the two thousand twelve, or two thousand twelve plan been approved by redevelopment?
Yes. Uh, no other amendments have been made to either the Falls Landing, uh, economic development plan, or the inner city road plan since January of this year. And it's my understanding, it hasn't been, I don't, I don't believe it was ever done in the past two or three years, because I personally, I personally think it was just...
I don't know what you're saying. So, it sounds, it sounds like to me there is no plan, but we had individual plans for these two objects, and now by the fact they have become the plan.
For, for.
That's what I'm hearing, I heard, we don't have a plan, but we have two plans, and now they are the plan.
For, for, for example, for example, in, in two thousand, two thousand and six, when we built the, uh, two fire stations and the city, uh, services complex, at that time, redevelopment, it was not required by the council, redevelopment amended these two plans to include those three projects.
Okay, so twenty, resolution twenty-eight, is that the resolution you're talking about, that redevelopment, um, far down, it's something like Kevin McRae?
Yes.
And so when it says, um, collectively, the two thousand twelve projects and the list of projects in the original plan, two thousand twelve plan, we're just talking about the police station?
Police station and stormwater conveyance.
Can I just say for clarification, because if the resolution is approved, and I was still comfortable, I might have referred to the two thousand twelve plan, not the one that was directed at the accuracy, specifically identifying that, just those two specific projects, so then there's no confusion, um, any interpretation, or somehow, a two thousand twelve plan, that it was a project?
Well, I mean, I, I.
I'd like to be as specific as possible.
I read it this way, exhibit A, and it goes on to the amendment, it's clear, together with all necessary redeveloping improvements included, the two thousand twelve plan, I use the two thousand twelve plan as exhibit A.
Could we add it in there just for our conversation?
Well, see, that's fine. I don't know, I don't care.
Just the way I think it's written, let's be honest, I think if we're after the two thousand twelve plan, and you're amending a, that's a two thousand forty resolution, I trust that's a two thousand eighty declaratory resolution, and that two thousand twelve plan is considered something else.
I got the note.
We can just amend that anyway, that that's a.
You just put it in there, two thousand four. Two thousand twelve plan is.
These two plans.
But, but the two thousand twelve plan.
Twenty twelve, the twelve twenty plan shall consist of those projects listed in exhibit A.
Well, I, I didn't really say that, that within our resolution, plan, does it solely of the storm.
Well, be careful though, because the, I mean, we're, we're going back twenty-five, thirty years, I mean, we are spending TIF dollars out of Falls Landing, and specifically Veterans Parkway, to do infrastructure projects, and in the current plan, it does allow for us to do that, I mean, I mean, we're going to build roads out there.
Why don't you say the two thousand twelve plan, those are the two projects?
That's my, I, I agree, but I think the way you, way you were phrasing it, you may be jeopardizing any of those older plans, but still, I.
We're just trying to identify specifically, the two thousand twelve plan, it's not the old plan.
I mean, that's fine, but I mean, I don't.
Police station and the.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, why don't, why don't you just say the two thousand twelve plan shall consist of the police station and stormwater conveyance system?
That's what we're trying to get to.
That's what I said.
That's what happens when you get to me, right?
Those two projects, I think, make it consistent.
That's fine, I don't.
Is the stormwater conveyance system, is the interceptor, is the interceptor, a multiple interceptor, is that the water conveyance system?
Yeah, that's, that's.
To clarify.
How is that being clearly within the body of the resolution?
And that's for the properties that we'll purchase, correct?
Exactly.
That's the reimbursement part of the acquisition.
All this, all the.
The, the.
Is there, is there a time constraint, to not?
Yes.
Okay, what, what's the, what's the?
Uh, Monica, um.
Our fund balance is upside down, we're closing here on our funds, so we don't have any fund balance, even tax.
No, Monica can't read line from one tip to the other if we repay it six months?
We have a link around what we're doing, and I, I, I don't, I don't even know the legality of doing this.
You do, you're just pushing the can further down the road, I mean, one reason why, I mean, we're, we're ready to move forward on the police station, I mean, we're ready to go to bed, but we cannot move forward with the police station bond until we, A, clean up the two thousand and six bond, and get this redevelopment bond out of the way.
And I, and I think that the council's ready to move forward with the police station as well, but my question is more about what it, the plan entails, what it entails, future funding needs, future projects, or even past projects?
Which plan?
Exactly.
No, the only, the only, the only, the only, right. Again, the only thing that you are amending is to include the police station and the stormwater conveyance system. You are not including any other projects that have been proposed.
So, what, what would be the process for those other projects?
We will, we will start with the process, just like we did here, we will start with redevelopment commission, we'll go with planning commission, come to you all, and we'll go back to the redevelopment commission.
So, that's the, that's the process for all projects that are funded via TIF dollars, now?
Yes, to include, to be included in the economic development plan. And that changed in two thousand and eight.
And everything else to be included in that economic development plan?
Unless it's, unless, you know, it's already in the plan, but I would tell you, Ice Miller has reviewed our existing plans, and has looked at the projects that are being talked about, that do not meet the existing plan descriptions.
That's how I think.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we, we, we could have just stuck with the, stayed with the other bond council, given us whatever came before you all, okay? But we realized that it was not being done correctly, and we're here now trying to fix it. And, I mean, because previous bond council never brought this before the council, and I have a question. I'm assuming that four years of TIF dollars have been spent since two thousand and eight, and probably were not stamped correctly either, because I don't think the plans were amended.
I still have a question. Uh, the resolution twenty-four, which is the big one, go to page two, now they're be resolved by the county council, city of Jeffersonville, number five, are actions of the council in conflict appealed, and shall appeal by repealed, what does that refer to?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if there's, if, if there is an ordinance, I mean, I would assume there's an ordinance or resolution out there saying that you're, you know, what it's out there, previously adopted, it will be contradictory to the police station or the stormwater conveyance system.
Would there be such an ordinance? When these projects have been on the books that long, I don't think we.
No, I mean, I, that's just language that's covered, that's just to cover, C Y A, the language for the attorney. Ice Miller voted, but they're not here.
Is that, is that the ordinance, Wes, because we described earlier that somebody hold two thousand and six bond ordinance, when it was pledging all TIFs?
Yes.
We actually had that need to be changed.
Yes. We're cleaning up to two thousand and six. So, I mean, we're not, this is, I mean, we, believe me, I, uh, there, there, there have been moments in the last three or four months, I wish we would have stuck with the old bond council, as I would be here, but we're here, you know, trying to do it the correct way, to follow the statute, and, you know, the correct way to do it is, is to amend these plans, we are just amending for these two projects, and in the future, there will be other amendments to be proposed, for purposes of funding those projects with TIF dollars.
So then, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry, I lean on you, I mean, you, you know what some of our concerns are, and you see the wording on here.
Sure. And that's what I'm saying, Wes, about the bond council, Ice Miller brought up this procedure, which I concur statutorily, this procedure has to happen, it's the same thing any time the plan's got to be amended, has to come before the council. I mean, my only concern is just, we may be talking semantics, but as the attorney for the council, I would feel better if we would just, if we would amend some of the language, see the actual two resolutions presented to us, when we first, the two thousand twelve plan, I'd like to just make sure that we define what that is, stormwater base project, and the police station project. And I think if we have that language in the body of our resolution that we're approving, that would give you peace of mind, and it gives the council peace of mind, that that's the only thing that we're amending in the plan for those two projects. Just because the way it's written, I think it's just a little gray area there about what is this two thousand twelve plan, I just would like to just define it. I, I just, I think the catch of the exhibit is, it's not good enough, because the way this is written, you talk about the two thousand twelve plan, and the declaratory resolution, which is in catch of exhibit A, I just wanted to define what the two thousand twelve plan is, of those two projects.
Mr. Lewis, I have a question, I'm still on this number five, of actions of the council in conflict are hereby repealed, would that then include, um, ordinance that a previous council passed allowing oversight of all the TIFs, TIF plans? Because if we are saying, okay, we no longer need to see the two plans that are coming in, in regards to these projects, then I would not be in agreement with that.
I mean, there, there's a gray area that it could possibly be interpreted as.
Which, which, which one are?
It's on page.
It's two of the resolutions, running for.
The big.
The big one.
The big one, what is that, the, the big one, the big one is the one that we are clarifying in two thousand and six.
Are not.
Um, the pledge, TIF pledge for the two thousand and six. So, that language is referring to the ordinances and the resolutions that were passed in reference to the two thousand and six bond issuance, in which, at that time, our TIF revenues from every TIF and our future TIFs were pledged for that.
Kind of add that to.
Let me ask it.
Number five, when this is all expensed, maybe identify that concerning, the answer review revealed, it was actually concerning.
That's right.
The, 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 the.
That's right.
See what I'm saying? If you want to specify.
Say it's somebody in my.
Well, I think what's, what's saying, which I bring, I think the reason why that's put in there, uh, is because they're saying that any other previous action that's in conflict with yours, that's, that's a valid pledge today.
It seems to me that we have major questions, that we need, we're trying to rewrite this thing on the front, and this is a multi, multi, multi-million dollar thing we're getting out of the oven, one vote, and it's done. Um, and nothing, has nothing to do with the police station or the conveyance system, because everybody said we're in agreement with that, but there's too many questions, and, and we're all asking Scott, and it's time to try and rewrite our mechanism table, and let them work out the, the language.
If, if, if I could point out, you've only voted to issue these bonds, I mean.
Well, we voted on bonds, this is something.
Yeah.
Different, this is different language in front of us.
Well, so did you need to meet to get this done?
Pass to be done?
The twenty, when it.
Twenty-eighth is when redevelopment's meeting.
Does there have to be a certain time, could we have, because we're going to have to, I think, have another special meeting, can we vote for it as long as it's before the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yeah, I would support that.
We have our second, ladies and gentlemen. Are we having a special meeting before twenty-eighth?
We can.
Sounds good.
Just on this one. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we, we have to be before the twenty-eighth, or can it be before the end of the year?
It's going to be before twenty-eighth, because redevelopment commission's advertised for a public hearing, and.
Okay. Our, our motion is sent to table, um, the two resolutions, you know, regarding the inner city road, and the Falls Landing redevelopment plan. Any other discussion? Just for clarification, for all of the women in uniform back there, I don't think anybody on this council, as opposed to the projects that are here, is just really going to examine this language to make sure they're not hanging over, uh, these thirty-one million dollar bond, without any kind of oversight.
Yeah, oversight. Again, I was.
Looking to make sure of that.
I would say that, I mean, white elephant in the room, okay?
It takes us a special meeting.
Whatever, whatever, we, we know, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, redevelopment administration's going to have to come back for the city council to ask for the, those redevelopment plans to be amended, to, to do the projects the mayor wants to do. That's what you all want to hear, that's what it is, state law. So, we're going to table this, so we can make two changes, correct?
Well, so far.
Yes, how long can it, how long will it take you?
I can make them in fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Do you have, is there a motion, second to go, table these two items, any other discussion? Saying no, no, all those in favor, signify the same. Opposed? Uh, before we move on to next, next topic, I do notice that we have two of our redevelopment commissioners, for the representatives for the city council here, Jamie Lake and Rob Stevens, thank you for coming tonight, is there anything you want to say, regarding this issue, anything redevelopment, redevelopment that you hear?
Well, I came tonight to.
Hello, I have to, the microphone's due to be. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming, and you all have a merry Christmas.
Thank you. Well, I just came tonight to try to find some clarity, I was not at the redevelopment meeting on November twenty-seventh, when the resolution twenty-eight was passed, so last Thursday's redevelopment commission, I had lots of questions for clarification on the things that we just talked about, and I think what, um, Mr. Brookley just, just described, um, really helped me. As a commissioner, I've been on the redevelopment commission uninterrupted for the last five years, I had no idea what the two thousand twelve plan is.
Could you hold it up just a moment till our guy gets out, because.
Well, that's, nobody can hear you.
Our guy clears out, then we can.
Paul's taking the money.
Go, go, Jamie, it's quiet down.
I just, I came tonight just for clarification, for my own, for my own purpose, I, I'm concerned about these bonds, I was on the redevelopment commission when the, when the bonds were originated, uh, for the stormwater conveyance, and this is kind of a follow-up to that, as it starts to culminate into what's going to become the issuance of these bonds, um, so I had some questions with that. Um, I think what Mr. Merkley just said helps clarify to me what the two, two thousand twelve plan is, I wasn't sure what the two thousand twelve plan was, or the list of projects, but what, what does concern me is, what was stated as the first process as it comes to redevelopment for discussion, the discussion on the police station has never come before redevelopment. I personally am wholeheartedly for the police station, I always thought it should be a hundred percent a redevelopment project, just as we did the fire station, city hall, aquatic center, Little League fields, I mean, you name it, it's completely within the TIFs, but I just have a few questions with regards to it, I, I wasn't completely satisfied with the answers I got Thursday night's redevelopment commission, um, which, you know, we've got smart bond council, um, working on these projects, but, um, I was confused why the police station is even in the Falls City, uh, Falls Landing TIF, when the property's completely within the inner city road there. There may be semantics as far as some of the funding and attributing TIFs, and I would understand that, but, uh, that's just a, that's a, probably more semantics than anything, but my larger question is, we need to have discussion as a redevelopment commission about adding these projects to this, I think this resolution added the police station into a list of projects, I wasn't at that meeting, but my first question probably would have been, where's the list of projects that we're adding to it? And then, let's enter a discussion on the police station. Um, I think the police station has whole, wholehearted support, don't get me wrong there, it has nothing to do with the police station. My bigger concern is, any project we add to this plan, we need to be having discussion about it as a commission, um, and that was a lot of what our discussion Thursday night was, as a commission, and I think you heard from all the commissioners there, that collective need for communication of what these projects are, and we had set, um, a goal to create this master list of projects that we want to work on at our January meeting, so I was a little concerned with some of the language in the resolution, I think a lot of my concerns were answered tonight.
Jamie had asked a question earlier, did redevelopment pass the two thousand twelve plan? And it was said, yes, Les said they did, and there was only the two things on the plan?
I don't know whether or not that it was spoken of, but it looks like this resolution did pass, and the police station's in the resolution, I have no doubt that the police station passed, but my concern is, we've never had the larger discussion of, hey, does the redevelopment, does this redevelopment commission support the police station, and if so, how do you want to go about it? How do you want to pay for it? How do we want to go about designing it and so forth? I know some of the design aspects are already ahead of us, this is more semantics of funding, but this is setting up ability for TIFs to fund it, which I'm wholeheartedly in support of, I think TIFs should be funding a hundred percent of it, but, um, I'm just more concerned with the larger issue. As a redevelopment commissioner, I've never been afforded the right to discuss whether or not I want to add a police station to my, to the list of projects that we should be, um, dealing with. Now, in all fairness, I wasn't at the meeting that this resolution added, added that to it, but I don't know if the larger discussion was there, but, Mr. Stevens was at that meeting.
Yeah, I was at the meeting, and, and I was sort of under the impression that it was really to make the bonds sellable in two thousand and twelve, um, and Les, I think I tried to listen to a recording, uh, that when Buddy Downs from Ice Miller brought that up, it was to get it updated to two thousand and twelve to be able to sell the bonds. And so, I was unaware that the, the project portion, I didn't know if that was ten projects, or if that was just the police station and stormwater. And so, we've never really seen the project list, or the plan, but I think tonight, I understand that is just two, two entities, and I think that once you re, uh, allocate that and revise the language, as a commissioner, I would be fine with that.
I would too, I would second that completely, and we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-eighth, and I think what we could do as a commission is just, uh, adopt the amendments to that resolution for clarity, I would feel completely comfortable with that. And I think it'll allow us to move forward in, in the light that we want, but, um, and then as a. as a commission, we just need to follow up for, to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future for this misunderstanding.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming here today and for your willingness to serve, um, at the, at the council's, council's pleasure to work on our redevelopment commission and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Reference to the police station, the reason it was included in there is because, as you can see, this was a lengthy process to amend an economic development plan. So at the time we realized that, uh, it was never done previously to include the stormwater advance system, so we had to amend it to include that. We thought, well, we're months away from hopefully moving forward on a police station, uh, project, let's go ahead and include the police station in these two plans as well so we don't have to do it down the road. And just because we include the plan, a police station, there is gonna be many, many other hurdles, resolutions, ordinances, and meetings that redevelopment and the city councils come out to deal with as to the financing of the police station, whether it's with TIF dollars, whether it's with other sources that the city has, and, you know, just because we've included the police station in a economic development plan, I mean, that was just done out of convenience, so we didn't have to start the process all over to come next year to move forward, so...
Les, real quick, just, just, um, is there gonna be an annual plan? I mean, that's...
No, I, I would, you know, I would assume that as projects come up, though, the plan will be amended.
It is just amended to two thousand and twelve, and that becomes the new two thousand and thirteen plan.
Okay. I mean, apparently there has been a plan for the past four years, so this is also new.
All right, thank you. Next up, Peggy Duckey, recognition for Indiana American City and Molly Genio.
Good evening. You'll be relieved to know I only have pictures, no plans of any sort. Um, City Pride, um, also Tony Deco, my co-chair is here, and I wanted to recognize, anybody who's on City Pride, raise your hand. We have some of our members here tonight. Um, we've had a fantastic year. Uh, we wanna thank you all as usual for all of your support. Um, we had a great year despite the fact that our donations were down, our, in the fundraise or some of our contributions were down. One of the reasons that we had such a good year is that we had found some great corporate and business partners in our community, and, um, they have, I, I, we, we met here once before and talked to Steel Dynamics and the contributions that they made, and another, uh, partner that we have is Indiana American. Indiana American last year came to us and said, we've got some crews, do you have some projects? And we said, we always have projects, what do you wanna do? These, um, their crews have shown up, they have been cheerful, they, we've given them digging and nasty muddy things to do. This year, I will say that they came back to us again and said, do you have projects? We said, of course we do. Um, one of the crews this year put in the landscaping at the Hard Steadman Museum Collections building in a raging thunderstorm, and never complained and just said, hey, we're getting done! So I, we're tickled to death, we're, we're so thankful to them. We thought that it would be nice, instead of our constantly, you know, my hugs and four hundred ninety-five times tell them thank you, if we could ask them to come in here and you all could recognize them. Tonight we have Roger Maynard, a lot of you all know, with Indiana American. Mr. Maynard, if you could come up here? We wanted to recognize them.
And with that, I have a certificate of appreciation, uh, worth of Indiana American, for being an outstanding business leader, uh, City Pride communication projects. Uh, we couldn't do it without you, so it was awarded to some people in the city council. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome to Reno, crews are used to being wet.
Uh, I, it should be noted that we've had Steel Dynamics in here before. For those of you all who don't know, there's a Maynard connection. Um, Roger's wife Diana was our client at Steel Dynamics, so perhaps we should just be giving certificates to the Maynard family for all of their projects. We're, we're very grateful, and, and we hope that we will continue to, um, gain new partners that are like that, because I think it makes everybody feel good, in addition to getting it done. One of the projects that, um, Indiana American worked with us on last year was to add some landscaping down near the flood wall. There were a couple of benches that were added by the ladies auxiliary, and it was demanded to view better the flood wall murals than had already been done previously. And in doing so, City Pride started discussing, we have these beautiful flood wall murals that show Jeffersonville's past, and what we would like is if maybe we could continue with those. In fact, what we'd like to do is we'd like to add some that show what Jeffersonville is now, maybe something that says to people who are visiting there, I'd like to drive one into town and see more of what I see in these pictures. Um, we had the idea that maybe if we changed the color palette to something that was more vibrant, it would depict the contrast between the past and the present. And so we started inquiring and we asked the Mayor Garibon, you know, what's the status of this? And at the time we were told, well, there's still money in the fund, but there really isn't a committee anymore. And we said, well, if we came up with a concept for a mural and an artist and a budget, is there a possibility that we could get a new mural approved? And they said, for sure. So we came up with a concept and we inquired with, we were working with Don Struck, who is art teacher at Jeff High, everybody knows and loves, and we talked to her about, well, who would be a possibility for an artist? And she recommended Molly Brenner. Molly is a two thousand and six graduate of Jeff High. She's a two thousand and eleven graduate of Ball State University, and she, we talked to her about concepts and said, what do you think? Here's what we're thinking. She came back to us and we said, we love you. We, what you're doing is, she gave us a budget, she said, here's what I could do for, this is perfect, this is exactly what we wanna see. So I'm gonna try and show this for anybody who has not seen, and I'm shortening this in the interest of you all actually getting out of here to ever do Christmas shopping. Okay. This is the original mural that was done by Molly, and this was her idea. This obviously, um, shows shimps, and the, the colors are amazing, and she can tell you, you know, all the people inquiring when she was working, this is where those people are inquiring now. They're just, they love it, the shimps love it, and it is a great, uh, lead-in to the actual thing. Um, Molly started again this year, we, we had so much good feedback, we then came to Mayor Moore and said, can we do this all over again? If we have a concept that you like and it fits in the budget, et cetera, et cetera, and there was still many left in the fund. And he said, absolutely, everybody loves it, so let's do it again. So we have, I have just a couple of pictures of Molly working, we're gonna skip all of that. I will show you this, because this was pretty standard. Molly can tell you that there are a lot of interested people. In fact, she had people who came and parked in their cars and just sat and watched her work, which would totally freak me out, but she did find that. Um, and you can see that this one turned out to be, this is the Concerts in the Park. If you were lit on the far right side, I don't know if you can see it very well, but Molly actually painted in Barbara Wilson. She's sitting in a chair, because Barbara is instrumental in, in getting the Concerts in the Park, and she's always been, and we thought that would be a nice tribute. I'm not gonna tell you what it is, but if you go down there and you find Barbara Wilson, there's also another little, uh, character sitting next to her that was Molly's idea. So, um, that being said, um, I wanted to make sure that Molly gets some recognition. Um, we hope that these can continue. I will tell you this, we talk a lot about education, we fight a lot about education in greater Clark County, and Molly is exactly who we want representing Jeffersonville and representing greater Clark County schools. Not only is she unbelievably talented and creative, she is professional, she is articulate, she is hardworking, she has dealt beautifully with the public, and we should all be really proud. One day when she is unbelievably famous, she's gonna say, I'm from Jeffersonville. So I would like to ask Molly to come up.
Special appreciation from the city council to Molly for her outstanding, uh, community, uh, for outstanding, being an outstanding community leader and her work, uh, for the City Pride communication projects, in particular for artistic mural on Jeffersonville flood walls.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say thank you for everyone's support on this project, and, uh, these obviously wouldn't happen without the support of the community, um, and the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
We would like to make one last request. We would like to, uh, recommend that the city engage Molly for one hour. Um, tend to, I noticed when we were down there doing the landscaping on the flood wall, that on the Ogle Mills, former Mayor Rob Waze's name is misspelled. Oh, we don't feel that that represents greater Clark County schools or our overall spelling ability very well, so we would like to engage Molly to paint over the E at the end of Waze. Uh, maybe I'm wrong. So anyway, we would just, that's our recommendation.
How, how much time did it take for her to do these individual murals? I'm just kinda curious.
Um, about two months.
You forgot. And we don't know how many hours, or...
Um, roughly three hundred to three hundred and fifty hours.
We, we had the, the cost per mural was between an eight and ten thousand dollars, and that includes materials.
Okay. Wow.
Thank you all very much, and thank you all for everything that you all do for City Pride.
Well, next up, we'll talk some more about, um, the flood wall murals. Joyce Wood, my label.
Thank you for the opportunity of speaking, and so I don't ramble around and waste time, I'm gonna read the statement, and then if I don't cover things that you have questions about, please feel free to, uh, ask me. I am here representing tonight the Dafford Flood Wall mural project, which is really alive and kicking. Um, this is the project that Peggy just spoke about, of the six large murals that are existing down on the flood wall. This was a project that started with the city and a group of private vendors and local foundations, and this project started in two thousand and five. And at that time, Robert Dafford was engaged by the committee to paint the six large panels. And Robert, we can get you more information about him if you don't know of him. He's an internationally acclaimed muralist, and I don't know how the committee got him for the money that he was willing to work for, but it's an incredible, uh, coup to have gotten someone of that caliber to put those murals there. The intention of the six panels was to be a cultural tourism attraction when it was finished, and also to serve as an educational tool, to assist in, um, elementary school children as they, as we all have gone through their section on Indiana history. So those were the two objectives, and those were the two objectives that all of the funding sources were approached with that understanding. Uh, for the mural project, local individuals, corporations, foundations, and the city, which put in a very small amount, raised a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to support these, this project. The funds, because the committee was not a, not for profit organization, the funds were held in trust by the city of Jeffersonville as the fiscal agent. But with the exception of twenty thousand dollars, all of the money that was held in that fund was restricted money from organizations and donors such as the Ogle Foundation and also from, uh, American Commercial Lines. So we had some very large donors, uh, and some individual donors who also designated their money for this particular project. So there were two phases to the project, and we all know we have the murals, that was phase one, so Robert is finished with his painting. And now, phase two was planned to be, um, and I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna send some pictures around, 'cause I don't think I can... Somebody is more technically inclined than I am, perhaps we could... Put them on here and everybody can see. See, I'm old tech, I was just gonna pass them around. Just put them down on here?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is it coming on? Okay. Uh, not really able to see the color. I think that's gonna be a problem. I'm gonna, let's just pass these, can we pass these out to the folks and just like, yeah? And just, let them see it, 'cause I wanna just quickly, and then if the group wants to see it, that'll be fine. Um, this is...
There's, there's...
I'm sorry.
A second. Yeah, so, so my question kinda curious, what, what, uh, what's the main point? I mean, are, are you discussing here?
I'm, I'm giving, yes, I'm giving to her right here. In order to, I'm sorry, in order to complete the project, sorry, um, we need to access the balance of the funds. And according to the books of the, of the project, uh, there's approximately thirty-one thousand dollars that should be in that fund, remaining for phase two, which is lighting and landscaping and the interpretive educational plaques. So when we talked with Monica about accessing the money in that fund, she indicated that there is, uh, not sufficient money in that fund, uh, to come up with the amount that we show on the books. And so we're here tonight to ask you, please, uh, will you replace the amount of money that has been drawn from that fund for, we don't know? Uh, and Monica can tell you how much, what the difference is, uh, because it, that changed. A second part is when we do get those funds, would, that we could please put them into a restricted account this time and not co-mangle them with any other special projects, so that the committee knows that that money is actually there, uh, when they start to, um, you know, agree, that they're ready to have money to pay for this. And third, that we, if possible, someone from the committee could work with Monica whenever an invoice comes in to make sure that that is indeed for the Dafford mural project. So, I'm sorry, to get to the point...
So, let's try to find the sign, though. There are some, the funds were spent, but they're spent on, on basically murals and continued waste, as far as you can tell.
They were paid for, the spending, the expenditures were made for the murals at the flood wall. They were not bundled through this committee.
But all of the money was not earmarked for the Dafford, from what I understood you to say?
No, the money, the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars was earmarked for the Dafford murals, and all except the, uh, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars has been paid out for phase one, which was the painting of the murals. And the second amount of money that, that was left was to be paid for lighting, properly lighting it, and you can see it's, it's going... Do we have an ordinance or something that tells, I need to see it, and that's where it says exactly what those funds were supposed to be spent for?
There is no ordinance, it went into the donation fund, we're gonna manage through that, and, uh, this is all set up back in when...
But way back into Rob Waze.
Two thousand and five.
Right. As I remember.
Is there any documentation to, to...
Because I remember there was some paper, but, I mean, he's obviously with, uh, oh, he's with us, I didn't mean it to sound like he's not with us, but... He was not only working on the mural, so I would think using it as an extension is what they've done.
Then we've got a wonderful project.
Yeah. But how much would the lighting and stuff be, or whatever else that you wanna do? The, the estimated amount that should be left in the fund is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Well, no, I'm asking, how much would the project be? We have not costed it out at this point, but that, at the beginning, was the, was the estimated cost, and the, the amount that you, the, uh, that, what, the pictures that have come around, those were the renderings that were drawn by this off and on group at that time. But the thing to understand is, this is not city money. This is privately donated money that the city was keeping in trust, which means if we're not going to expend the thirty-one thousand, or we have ten thousand left over after this work is done, that has to be returned to the donors.
Do you have an agreement? Are there agreements on that?
Yes, we have written agreements on this, we have contracts.
That's what we're asking.
Yes, that's what we're asking.
I was providing copy one and insubstantive from the Ogle Foundation on other contributions. This really was, uh, did give me air... This river was, did give me everything that, at the time, in that, we had a short period of time. I can't find anything to clarify what the limitations were.
Right, that's what we need to see.
However, when you're the main fiscal agent of that, we are in control of those funds, and we do need to combine by whatever those donations were mainly pressed for. However, I don't have any can say, other than the one I said, which says Flood Wall Murals, it doesn't specify anything more than that, and the one that we've got to communicate.
I think, I think if we could get an accounting and a paper trail, I think that's what we're asking for. And I, I think you're maybe able to fulfill a vision of what was started back then, right?
Right.
I mean, and I...
I think that's the, yeah, that was the, that was the committee's request here, was that they be able to fit, finish it, so that, you know, you can't see them in the dark now. They're too timid to be...
You still have members, are you the president of the committee?
No, I'm not. Barbara Donovan here. Over here is the president of the committee, and she was the driving force behind the creation of the murals. And so...
Can you file that paperwork to, to Monica or something, so that she can distribute it to us?
We can.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And so you're basically asking us to fulfill a shortfall?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need a...
We need to see what we...
A little bit of paper trail, where the money went, where it's going, the differences and stuff, 'cause I think we all scored the project. We just need to review the paperwork and move forward.
Get that to you specifically. Thank you.
Monica, you were saying there was thirty-one thousand, I thought that was left, or how much are we showing in the account now?
We have a hundred and thousand, sixty-three hundred. The money that was spent to complete the projects that were done through City Pride, that's for murals, and anything else of the...
So it was off the flood wall?
All flood wall murals, it did not grow up through committee advice.
I got you. Okay. So the, so the shortfall, that shortfall was split on murals, just not with a particular committee?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Who's on that committee?
All right. I, I was trying to follow up, thank you.
That's, it's confusing. It's this particular project. It doesn't matter whether it's this committee or that committee. The, the money was given for a specific project, regardless of who's...
And the project hasn't worked for you, 'cause the lights and some of the landscaping?
The lighting and some landscaping, that's right.
And what's the, do, do you have, does the committee have a timetable as to when they're going to price up the, the cost of completion?
Well, we were hoping that we could get some assurance that the money would be returned at some point, and that we were going to go right ahead with that.
You need to go ahead and get the pricing, is what I was...
Get some bids. Also, do we need to, if we're gonna do this with the, evidently, there had been a few more murals painted on this, and also, we've got some murals on the east side of the flood wall, the two new ones, the Shims and the, uh, concerts in the park. So we may wanna, if we're gonna light this, we may wanna continue to pick them up as well. Mike, one thing that, that might, you might check in on, I noticed on one of those drawings that looked like they were taking up the asphalt or concrete in front of the flood wall.
Well, that's an interesting thing, because if you go down there, you see that there's been a sidewalk poured right up against the wall, and...
My only concern is Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
That might restrict what you're able to do there.
That committee, we...
And we might, we might be well retired before you get that homework from the Corps of Engineers. Just something for you to look at. You know, another thing too, uh, and just thinking out of box here, since our sidewalk is, we really can't do that sidewalk to get, there's not enough room in the parking, but landowners and other thing included, I would think we'd have to go through the on recording stuff, but it would be nice to have the lights, uh, actually fastened, you know, 'cause they're all painting and fastening things to the flood wall where they shine down on the mural, and keep it out of reach, yeah, as anybody...
There's a description against attaching the lighting. We have checked that out. Which is why, the, the artists were saying, in the landscaping, you can see the light goes up from the ground to hit those, because, well, whatever, it's very technical, and they have checked in here. But we think there's another way to deal with this, that's, um, not expensive, and we accomplish what we...
Uh, we, the city's always been pushing LED lighting, so...
Right.
They, they're not as efficient, but the price is coming down too, so...
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And we're gonna stick with the art theme. Eighty-seven, oh, yeah, that's up, public art commission, or, excuse me. We're, yeah, we're on our way. Approximately, approximately five months ago, we started the discussion about looking into the public art, and Jeff, uh, since we started that, uh, there's been a great deal of interest in that. We've seen projects that have, um, taken place, not because of us, but doing this, and it brings our awareness and the power. And we're talking about the flood wall murals tonight, and, um, those are awesome examples of exactly what we're talking about. What, what we're gonna do tonight is, we have a committee, and most of them are here tonight. You're gonna hear from a few of them, and then after it's over, we want to, I'm gonna introduce them to them tonight, 'cause we have something for them. But, but, um, the, the committee was just a pleasure to, to work with. Anytime you, you can work with eight or nine individuals, that, many of them may not have known each other before this, but they all have a passion for art, they have a passion for Jeffersonville, and you combine that, and it was, it was an interesting and enjoyable committee to be part of. We have our final report, which we said we would do at this meeting. I've emailed out to everybody ahead of time, or also to the mayor. I've given you guys a copy of this, um, tonight. But, um, I think we had, is it three people? Two people that are going to, um, give a report, a visual report, and then again, after that, um, I'd like to, um, re- recognize them. I need to set up the computer for them, I believe.
He has to get up, move it once, now. He has back surgery.
I think we did write all that redevelopment stuff, 'cause, uh, there's a lot of questions that it's like...
So we do some more work here? Why, why you set up?
Let me tell you, let me look. When we had, um, a gentleman from thirty-nine degrees north come up, it, he switched that up.
Mr.?
I think we got it.
Hold on, go. Just hit the space. Hit the spacebar, and if you go too fast, you can go.
I'd like to introduce Tonya Stevenson, and, um, she was an intriguing, intricate part of our committee, and a very exciting lady to, to participate in meeting with. She's got a lot of energy. I appreciate her, so...
Thank you all for having us here, and I really do appreciate the opportunity to be, um, on it, I guess would be the right word, uh, to be a part of this committee. It, it was, it was exciting. What I wanna do is give you that same excitement that we have, and that we felt about the community. As you can see in the pictures that you have up before you, we already have some public art, um, things that we go by every day sometimes, that we don't even pay attention to, uh, things outside of the county building, as the one, um, I'm gonna say to my left. We have the newly, uh, designated fire, um, sculpture.
It's a carved tree.
It is a carved tree, and I was there for the dedication, and it's absolutely gorgeous. Um, it was carved out of one log itself, so if that gives you some background on that. Um, and then we have our, um, I think that was Lewis, correct? I'm sorry, who? Thomas Jefferson, I'm sorry. Get my people together. All right. Public art, public art, as it says, intrigues, entertains, and it instills community pride. It really does intrigue. I don't care if you like art or not specifically, if you like, uh, pop art, if you like intricate art, if you like, what type of art you like, or you don't, like, it doesn't matter, it still intrigues you to look at it. And when you're looking at bringing people into our town, we want to intrigue them. We want to get them from across that bridge to here. We have the walking branches coming over, we need something to look at. We need something to excite them to come into our, our city, and we have a great city that is full of a lot of art. It is entertaining, because if you look at it, if you take a moment and you look at any types of art, um, you're going to have to start thinking through a process, and it's going to entertain you. How did they do that? Their struggle, they come to the, the murals on there, um, looking at the features, those type of things. One of the largest things that I think is real is that the community pride that it's gonna give to us, this is a way that we can bridge communities. You have very ethnic communities sometimes that are not as recognized as others. You have other communities that are kinda being pushed back because newer communities are coming in. So there's lots of, and none of it's a negative on anyone, it's just that we're just kinda disconnected at times. So we need to be able to bring it together, bring pride from everyone, all together, into one place. And through public art, we can do that, because you can bring people from each of those neighborhoods, bring them together, and you can have a display that brings all of that together. It does revitalize our, our urban areas, 'cause we have a lot of areas that are, that are unoccupied, down on Spring Street, on other, in other areas. We can use those areas to put, um, public art into, maybe some displays in the windows. We can have the new areas, um, new businesses that would come in, they would love to put these pieces of art out there. It gives them a sense of pride and ownership in our, in our community, and we would love to have that, because we need, we need them here. They're gonna bring in our tourism, and it's gonna give us some more economic growth on that. That was the fun part of it. Uh, one thing I wanted to say before we get into this, I have a background, I have a studio degree, I've done, um, outdoor drama professionally, um, I sang professionally, those type of things, so I do have several, um, of the public art type backgrounds to bring to you. My mother's also an artist, uh, in many of these venues. When we look at art, you have to, you have to understand, as we said earlier, that art excites people, it, it brings people together. It is a therapy, and our town needs that therapy, our city needs that therapy. We need to be brought together in a very drastic way. And, and then you can laugh, and then I know that it's chicken laugh, sometimes you think, okay, but it, it's not an artsy, fartsy thing to say, this is therapeutic. Art's therapeutic, it brings people together. It brings everything in. I'm not gonna read this, you know when, when you all created us? It was August sixth, and where our charge was on that. What I do want to just really get into is, public art, um, is media, um, it's under the leadership of artists. That may be, um, may be people that actually are into the, the de-art, or that know about art history, that type of thing, so it is art. Someone that is connected in that way. It is intentional. This is not just something that you decide, oh, I think that needs a, a pretty color or a picture on it. It is very intentional. It is something that we're going to pick out specific people, of the young lady, as the, the first wall, um, murals were done, and many of our other, uh, great pieces of, of art that we already have are. It has to be staged in the public domain, so it cannot be inside, uh, someone's building that, or business that would be. It does have to be where the public can see this. It also needs to be something that, if it is, we have our, uh, things in the park, the, the orchestras and the different types of things along that line, that would be public art as well. It can be permanent, or it can be temporary. Temporary sounds sometimes like it's not worth the money, but it is, because it's something that you can say, I saw that, and you have to take a picture in your mind, and you have to know, and then that kinda goes away with time, where it's here. Kind of on a really, not, not quite, but just given, a little bit of an idea was when the wall came into, um, our area, so it was a temporary piece of art that came to us, that we had to take a picture in our mind and in our hearts and remember, and then it was taken away, and it went somewhere else. So that's the type of, of a, a temporary as well as some others. We do have to be within the government confines, which would be why we're here with you guys. Individual companies will be a part of this, as we've said before. They could donate, um, a building, the side of a building, to have a mural put on it. We don't have to have flood walls, we can use our buildings. Louisville's already started doing that with some of their things, why can't we? We don't have to say we are the semi-side of Louisville and just leave it at that, we can just be the semi-side, and we can do it ourselves. One thing I do want, um, my part is just about over, but the part that you see here says that, um, it's responsible, the government, the nonprofit arts organizations are responsible for overall program management, fundraising, public accountability, site and order selection processes. I don't want anyone to get messed up, and we talked about this, on the fundraising part of it. It is not that you guys are gonna go out fundraising, it's just that it is going to be a part of what that committee, um, is gonna bring through. Those of you that would want to be part of that process, of course, is gonna be there. But I want you to, we were concerned that you might think, oh my gosh, everyone on here has to, to fundraise and has to be a part of putting together these artists and that type of thing. I do want you to know that that is not what we expect from you. We expect your support, your help, your excitement, and, um, going forward with the, um, hopefully, the next committee that is put in place. These are just, uh, a few of the things that can be, uh, part of the public arts. We already have most of them. In fact, I just saw the really cool bike rack that was put out, um, that was just the newest thing. I'm driving down, I haven't been downtown in a little bit, and just to see that out there, that was really cool, and to know that that was happening, as, as Nathan had said, while we're even going through that, so it shows how excited people that are here. We have our gardens, um, all different types of things. One of the things, I think, that was presented to you guys, everyone got really excited about were those, the ugly, uh, utility boxes that are in everyone's neighborhood, so that's, the way that we can bring our neighborhoods into it and have them buy into it, instead everything is just not downtown, everything is just not in these large areas, but we can bring into every single neighborhood at least one piece of public art by painting their utility boxes in their neighborhoods. Everyone, every neighborhood has an opportunity to be a part of this. No one should be left out. And I will hand it over.
Tony, hopefully my brother called, I caught a cold a few days ago. Also, Merry Christmas, Bargain, before we get, say so. I'm gonna give you an overview as far as what the process of the committee was, as far as what, uh, John and Nathan did. He spearheaded it, very organized, uh, kept everybody on track, gave everybody homework, kept everybody as far as a, a quick pace to get this accomplished. First, uh, one point was, let's see how public art could benefit Jeff. I was just explaining as far as how art benefits Jeff. You go to these other cities, other small cities, Columbus, you see art everywhere. You always wonder, why can't Jeff have something like this? Why do we, uh, why hasn't, hasn't been initiated yet? But, um, we said, we have more than what we expected, when we actually, when I did some of our homework looking for it. But get our existing public art throughout the city. A lot of these places you're gonna recognize. Bob Edge Park, uh, you got the Visitation Center, Gossmano Garden, uh, a lot of these, you don't really think how much art we have until you really travel out and try and find more than one or two locations that you just happen to pass by coming home from work. coming home from work. City Hall, Steamed Up Museum. Actually, Community Garden and Park Place. The Floodwall, Perrin Park, Howard Steamed Up Museum. Actually, on the basis of the tourism center, as far as extra details in those that you don't realize are there until you start looking for these things. It's a lot more than you actually think we would have. Even as far as the book collection, as far as for community gardening, as far as up in North Haven, right past Dove.
Can I ask you something real quick? Can you go back a slide?
Maybe.
Did you find the history of the statue on the right? The mermaid looking statue? What was the history as far as...
Somebody on our committee knows it, but I don't know it.
Did you know the history of it?
It was, you know, there were a couple of women that worked at Insty Prints, they were involved, and it's a private project. I understand it is for sale at a nice price. It's a wonderful piece, unfortunately, and sort of hidden away if you don't know exactly where it is.
You drive by, and you kind of say, what's he doing back there? But anyhow.
No, it's own property where the people that developed it own the property and own the business side.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no. Your question is the same thing everybody asks, as far as it's back behind Kitchen Compact area, along the railroad tracks, and thinking, it could be a fabulous piece in another place in the part of the city. We knew the locations where public art could enhance our community, as far as how many different areas that we could improve, as far as the looks of the city, as far as entrances into the city. We have 10th and Spring. Floodwall, I believe that's a runoff market, the Floodwall. 265 area, area that's exploding with businesses out there that would have probably no problem making numerous donations as far as entering art in that area. We have the overlook, we have as far as the, actually the boxes of, I think the Indianapolis is first proposed, they show the paintings on the, as far as control boxes for the streetlights. If you go out, start looking at how many control boxes are in every intersection you see. If you have those, some entertaining idea on those, what it would do to that intersection. Market Street and Spring Street. And as far as, look at potential partners and investors. And the whole thing is, as far as, that's with the council and the new committee, as far as what you're going to establish, as far as where the funds are going to come from. Where we can get the funds, as far as corporate sponsorship, corporate TIF incentives, corporate tax abatements, anything like that you can touch. And you could go to the internet and look up any city as far as that have already established in these programs, and they've already done all these things. So it's nothing that has to be invented. Hmm, may have to get some more to get final conclusion. Also, we did as far as an online survey, as far as where we got most of our results. And actually, it'll probably be easier to let you read it than me trying to say it. You may think 240, 224 people is not a lot of people, but art isn't for everyone. I mean, like I says, the only people really interested, as far as are going to respond to articles like this, or as far as surveys. But we're trying to get more people drawn into art, more people drawn into the looks of the city. Our key benefits of public art, 75% increased livability, attractiveness of the city. Best type of public art, hmm. Street furniture, benches, bikes, racks, bus shelters, utility boxes. 70% of the people attended public art events. Best site for public art, Big Four Landing. We put all this information together, analyzed our findings, and have created a set of eight recommendations for the city. Nathan, could I ask you to say those?
Sure. Absolutely. Our first recommendation is to resolve to establish a justice and public art program to make the city a more inviting place to live, work, and visit. Number two, to resolve to appoint a non-governmental entity as the public art program administrator to receive funding from the city to secure artists to complete permanent and temporary public art installations on city property. The third one, we purposely put timelines on here to keep us in movement. By February the 1st, appoint a joint committee authorized by the city council and the mayor to develop, by June 30th, a request for proposals and other processes to be used by the city to select and hold accountable a qualified NDR not-for-profit organization to administer this program. The fourth one, the city council and the mayor will each appoint a committee co-chair and up to three members who have demonstrated knowledge and expertise to complete the work. Number five, the city council should appoint an internal study group to explore the feasibility of a percent-for-art funding model to generate city funds for public art and report their findings at the city council meeting by June 30th. Number six, by October 1st, the city should issue a request for proposals, review the submissions, and select the public art program administrator. Execute a contract to provide startup funds for the period October 1 through December, and demand their allocation for the period January through December of 2014. Number seven, support and promote the interests or the activities of the newly established Jeff Park Public Art Program and work closely with the program administrator. Number eight, to work with the public art program administrator to issue a semi-annual presentation and annual report to the community on the activities, expenditures, and accomplishments of the Jeff Public Art Program. Thank you. Those are our eight. When we take it over from you, Tony, do you want to add some closing comments?
I don't think, actually, as far as, there's a lot of detail put into this report as far as what we think the city needs to be accomplished in the future. And actually, it's our goal to ask the council. It's going to be in your hands to take off with this. As far as our committee, as far as as the study committee, the next committee is going to be able to actually show as far as what the progress needs to be, what artists need to be brought in, where we need to go here to improve the city. So you get enthused about as far as, as much as we have been in the last four to five months, as far as the details that can go into the city. And as far as, I mean, Jeff is blooming, I mean, as far as the Big Four Bridge. We have a perfect opportunity to make a first example, as far as, I mean, first impressions or everything, as far as when people come into the city, as far as tourists. And we're going to give them that show, as far as to show this community's got a lot of pride in what we've got, and what we're going to have, and what's coming down the road. Anybody else?
I just wanted to let you know that in the time that people knew that we were working on this and that I was part of this, I cannot tell you how many people have come up to me and asked questions about how this is going to work and just be blended out here, but how excited they were. People weren't even interested in art before. They wanted to make sure that they understood what was going on. So he said, it's not always people, it's always art is not for them. Art is everywhere. Art is in where you're sitting, art is in your building, art is in your streets, your roads, your bridges, your walkways, everything. That is all art. It was all designed.
Thank you. Thank you. I would, if you'd just give me one more minute, I would like to introduce the members of the committee. And I have, and the members of the committee, we do have a special thank you to you. And those that I know that are here, I'll call, may call a name, but you may not be here. Don Anderson, he's saying. Melissa Bieber. Melissa helped compile the report for us, and I appreciate her very much. Tony Draper. Lisa Lee. Tom Limble. Did Patty Lindsey get to make it? No, Patty, good. Josh Rodriguez? I don't think. And Tanya Stevenson. And I'd like to also mention that Ms. Joyce Rimmel, she spoke earlier, Joseph E. Stein, she helped me a great deal from an organizational standpoint, and helping compile this, and I really appreciate her effort. And we had, basically, we've got a nice plaque that basically says, on behalf of the citizens, businesses, mayor, and city council, thank you for service on the public art study committee. And it's signed by the mayor and by council member. So if you would come up and each of us had one, I had Joyce to guess. So, thank you.
Tony, I agree.
Cheers.
I really love you, man. Yes. Very nice. I appreciate you. We started, Joyce. This is kind of a charity. I'm glad you're here. I appreciate you. 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 I appreciate you.
I am, this ordinance is to pass an amendment to the salary ordinance. I am going to request to suspend the rules on passage to get this done this year because the sewer board has approved the hiring of this individual, and that is the only change to this. And they do want to make that higher, if at all possible, before the end of the year. It is funded by wastewater and has been approved by the sewer board, and so all we're doing is making that change. They're adding a utility, a collection systems utility worker, and it's on the, it's the last page of the listing under collection systems.
And what is... To suspend the rule? If you want to. Go ahead. What's this person doing?
Len Ashack's the one that, they basically do inspections and stuff on the sewer, at the collection systems, and they're trying to, because of the expanded areas and annex, they've got some issues that they're concerned about and trying to get addressed. And that's, they, like I said, they anticipated hiring, and I said, whoa, wait a minute, you've got to get it on the salary ordinance. So that's what this is about.
That's the only change?
That is the only change.
What was that, Monica? What's it?
It's on the last page of the listing of different positions. Now, that far back, and it's under collection systems. All I've done is changed that from four workers to five workers. It's not a brand-new position. It's an existing position. They're just adding another employee.
Is that under the pay grade nine area?
Pay grade six.
It's pay grade six.
Okay. Keep that.
Do you want to use an R3?
Yes, that's what, I'm asking for suspicion.
Motion to suspend the rules 2012 OR 68.
Second.
And motion second to suspend the rules in anticipation of passing 2012 OR 68. Any discussion? Mr. Lewis, does this have to be unanimous vote? To suspend the rules?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. You can, I don't know.
Well, I think we're looking to have another meeting here. In fact, you know, you already mentioned it once before, so.
Yeah, we need to have a special meeting.
So if for some reason, I don't know, it ends up being a week or two later, I don't know if that changes plans much, but.
It is what it is. You guys are driving this show, so.
Is this a new position?
It's an existing position, we're just adding a person. They've increased the funding, they've increased the number of those, that collection utility system. They've added another.
It's a new.
It's a new.
Yes, I believe, isn't it? Pardon? Isn't it for the new plant?
Yes, it's related to the new old plant.
For the new plant, it's not for the old plant. So it's somewhere that's hanging up there.
All right, there's a motion second to suspend the rules. Any other discussion? All who's in favor, say the five or sign aye. Those opposed? Okay. Next motion, create 2012 OR 68 on all three readings. And this is, this is for the new plant?
The new plant.
That's not operational?
It's getting operational. It's, they're bringing on people from stations that are, that they have to get, make sure that those lines are cleared and correct because they're going to change the flows on this. And it's, am I correct, Tony, you were there as well when we discussed this and why there's concern about the number of problems within the lines, and that's what this individual's going to do.
I think, Matt, to answer your question, from what I've read, that they, we are, even with the new treatment plant, there are a lot of existing sewer lines that are, that's up in the plant. And years ago, we went through this infiltration, where if you've got a cracked pipe or a bad joint, we get water in, groundwater that goes in, and we have to treat. And they have, I forget how many feet or miles of new lines they have. All this has to be inspected as they process through this, and that's kind of, I think, a lot of what this job description is. So I don't know what your term operational meant.
Okay.
Does that fit that?
Sure. Yes, it does.
Okay. I'll just grab it, and I'll just get started. I agree.
There's a motion to pass in all three readings, is there a second?
All second.
A motion second to pass 2012 OR 68 on all three readings. Any other discussion? Saying no, all who's in favor, say the five or sign aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
On all three readings.
Thank you very much. The last ordinance that I have for tonight is, it is the ordinance of fixing the elected officials. As you may be aware, the, this statute requires that this be, that wages cannot be changed for elected officials in the year in which they hold office. So this has to be done prior to year end, and it was requested by council for me to make some corrections here. Two things are occurring here. One is the proposed increase to clerk's position, and also that we are changing the allocation of the wages for the city judge to be paid all out of the general fund.
And where was the, where was the salary funded from previously?
The judge's position was split between puff and general fund. It was approximately $36,000 and $18,000 is kind of the split. And now it's being, the recommendation is fund that all through.
And it was 36 out of puff?
No, 36 out of city, 18 out of, correct. If you want to bring closure to this without adding this to the agenda to the next possible meeting, again, you would need to suspend the rules, to pass on all three readings to get this in place. It has to be done before the close of the calendar year to make the technical.
Clarification again, we're increasing the clerk and keeping the judge the same, just combining it under general.
Correct. Correct.
Which previously, those, that salary was funded through probationary user fees, which are not...
A portion of it.
A portion of it. $18,000 of it, which is not city tax-generated revenue.
Correct.
And this was part, prompted the change.
It was the recommendation of the judge.
I can address that a little bit, because I talked to him a few months back. He was concerned that if he has somebody in front of him, and he fines them, that charges them a fee, and that's going for his own salary, that could be a conflict, could be perceived as a conflict. It hasn't been perceived as a conflict in...
Six years.
Past history of the court, but now it is. All of a sudden.
What's your opinion?
I mean, unless there's a directive by State Department of Council through judicial commission, I don't know why it's issued. I mean, very well, we may have, I don't know, but it seems like for that type of a change, it is, sometimes, you know, you have to follow the recommendations of the judicial commission or State Department of Council, but this is not being recommended by...
It's not being recommended.
Well, he's going to get paid either way.
Pardon?
But it's religious money's coming from. I know that.
Talk some of that's more.
If, and for some reason, he'd be collecting the puffs, he'd have to be paid, so he'd be paid either way. That'd be like us saying that we can't raise that tax because we get paid out of tax dollars.
But that's funny, because he's paid out of puff, and we don't, those puffs stay out of the general fund. Now you're absorbing the cost of anything, and you still don't absorb it. You still don't take in that revenue. How about if I...
I made a motion to pass ordinance 2012 OR 69 on the first and second. We can get clarification before our next meeting on whether or not it needs to be kept like this, or if we need to go back to the way it was. And if it's, if State Department of Council don't have any pride in being paid for out of puff, then... then that's how it'll be paid for out of puff.
I could say they've never taken exception with this in the past to have it paid for from puff. And basically, I believe it... what it does is it frees up dollars to focus towards paying for other expenditures with puff funds. That's what the objective was.
That was a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, all second on first and second reading.
Okay, a motion second to pass 2012 OR 69 on the first and second reading. Any other discussion?
This discussion... Mark, is that something that you can request from State... a clarification from State Department of Council for us?
I can.
Or does that need to be Scott? It doesn't matter really. Who else?
Either one of us can do it. If you want... if you want council to do that, you can. I can do it.
Go ahead, Mark. Ask if you... then before our next meeting, if you'd let us know what the recommendation is.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all voters in favor, say the five of a saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you all very much and as well to you all. Have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Just so you know.
And finally, with patience, I ask Ms. Hare and Greg Fager to kind of... regarding... I forget the name of the...
I don't know what they call it.
Yeah, that.
Okay, just say G.I.S.
G.I.S.?
G.I.S.
G.I.S. G.I.S.
I sent an email out to most of you guys. A few of them came back. It was the email address I got from Judy Van Gilder and off the website, so our address is changed. My address changed. That's the... I get it.
What I'm distributing is a draft joint resolution. Initially, it had been drafted... Vicky called me a couple of weeks ago and advised me that she had been in discussions with town of Clarksville and the city of Jefferson, primarily through Mayor Galligan when he was still in office, preparing to do this. And both the town and the city at that point were fully supportive of this. Basically, what happens is Vicky's probably operating the most understaffed assessor's office in the state of Indiana with the job that she has to get done. We're finishing up the 2012 reassessments, getting ready to start on 2015, I guess. And she doesn't have enough bodies to do what it takes to physically reassess seventy thousand-some parcels within the county. Pictometry basically provides photographic services, enhanced photographic services through air flights over the county. The last time we had one done was 2010. They... Vicky has procured a proposal from them. And what happened was we probably didn't transition this very well. It's something that hadn't been discussed through most of this year. The legwork was done last year. And now we're coming up... the pricing that they've given us expires at the end of this year and she needs to know what she's doing to get reassessment done next year anyway. So basically, what they've given us is a two... two alternative proposal for pricing. If we just sign up for one flight over the next two years, they were going to charge us basically two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. But if we go into it and say, "We'll take option B," which is we could opt to have one flight every two years over the next six years, that brings the year-long cost down to a hundred-and-seventy, basically, and that number's in that resolution. Even with that, given the county's financial condition, they can't fund it to our per se, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Vicky's conversations with the town and with the city is what this would... what this would do for you if you participate in it is optimize the level of TIF revenues that you get through accurate assessments and give you accurate information by which you could participate in contesting appeals of those assessments in order to not see your revenue drop. That's certainly what Clarksville has been interested in. They've already approved this joint resolution and have committed thirty-nine thousand dollars. It wasn't worth arguing with them initially. We thought both the city and the town were interested in contributing forty-two, with the county picking up roughly ninety thousand dollars. We can opt out of these last two flights so that we're securing the lowest possible cost. We certainly won't have the authority to obligate you for a second or third flight without coming back or to participate in that cost. But the hit is we've got to get this committed by December 31st, assuming... and at the last commissioners' meeting, they adopted. They haven't signed the contract yet. So they said between they and the council, they'll find the county's share of the funding and make this work. They meet again on Thursday. And I'm anticipating if you adopt this, they will approve the contract then and get this underway. You don't have to find a source for the money tonight. You just have to be telling us you'll find it over the next few months. So I don't think it has to get to that level of detail, but we certainly don't want to create a train wreck here. And your redevelopment commission, we would fund the whole thing and the other night they funded half of it. So what we're here asking for tonight is twenty-one thousand dollars and that gets it over the hump.
Yeah. And I... I met with Vicky. I think Ed did.
I was there last year.
Last year when this came out.
I did.
Don't have a problem with it. So I know what you're talking about. But really, the biggest user of G.I.S. is the sewer department.
Okay.
And so... and so I'm not... she's shaking her head. She knows it's not the city. It's really the sewer department.
Okay.
And I'm knowing for the city council to fund half because I know our planning and zoning department also uses it, but Scott... when's the next sewer board meeting? Is it this week?
This Thursday.
This Thursday. I would suggest that you come to them to get the other half. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, we just...
Can I make a suggestion?
Well...
Good.
I believe that it should be funded a third, a third, a third, is my opinion, because all three units benefit from this. Commission benefits it for the TIF and the verification of TIF neutralization. The wastewater uses the G.I.S. Planning and zoning uses the G.I.S. And the city itself uses it for...
Planning and zoning.
Place and far use it. It's a great tool for place and far. It is mutual, but it'd be useful.
It's a great tool. For like...
And the reason... and I'm just going to tell you, the reason I say that we need to use the sewers because in the last meeting, the sewer department's going to start rightfully so, not billing the city whenever we use their services. So then everybody needs to... and they're right. Because if we use their construction people, it's a different entity. And we've always paid them in the past. We've always paid them when we used them to tear down homes. We reimburse them that cost because that's somebody we didn't have to hire outside the city. And that's an issue that is going to be coming before the council as well next year and when we do the budget system.
If I may speak to you, sir, for the sewer board, that... actually, it's a statutory issue for the board because sewer rates, when you read the statute, are only supposed to be used for infrastructure and the operations and all that in sewer department. And there's been a tendency to utilize equipment and personnel in both departments and it's solely about sewer rates for non-swear functions.
Right.
Technically, you're violating statute on that, so...
Right. And I agree.
Yeah. My concern is you're saying, "So you have to fund that."
No, no, no. No.
I'm trying to make sure the sewer rates are being...
And it's... well, they use their TIF funding. That's what they... that's what they paid their owner because of the monies that is being saved in their TIF history. And that's all they justify paying. And that's why we're redeveloping first. I didn't think I was going to...
These grabber's already paying, too, though. Can we agree to pay it? Well, yes, we can agree to pay it. I understand that. But then resolve the third, third, or half and half, whatever internally so they can ...
They're not around. They're just...
You shouldn't have...
It was very...
Yes.
It was called a dumb choice.
My suggestion is that you agree. I think you will get full support from all three of you. The commission already agreed to run up to act the cost.
Yeah.
At that... what their action provides...
What's your next revision, Mark?
...to fund it. I feel like it would be just one.
The third is this week.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve 2012 R-23, which is this to the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Up to twenty-one thousand.
Up to twenty-one thousand.
Flexibility then.
If we... to reimburse...
We're really pulling up twenty-one thousand from... but to make it... economic... it's an edit, Mark.
You have a... you have a motion, there's a second.
I'm stacking it.
Motion second to...
I'm sorry. From edit. I'm hearing initially from edit. That's fine. Edit. If they're just starting for clarification.
Up to twenty-one thousand from edit. And you may ask other departments to pay their fair share because they've paid up to twenty-one thousand. Any other discussion?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
All right. So my votes in favor of 2012 R-23, say the five of a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and proceed on that. If you can just give me back a fully executed document, I can email it over to you. That'd be great. Thanks. Thanks, y'all, for that.
Thank you. There's man, summit of public... I just wanted to, I guess, we need to... if we're going to have another meeting on this redevelopment, I mean, on these bonds, we need to put the dates. Either you can get it done out of...
Yes, you can. I want to...
Yeah.
Well, we need to do it on this left of salary, too. The left of salary, that we just... it has to be done before the end of the year.
Before the 28th? Is that when the next meeting was?
Right.
So...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven?
November 27th.
Twenty-seven?
Thursday?
Twenty-seven.
October 27th, Thursday.
Twenty-one.
October 27th, Thursday.
Twenty what?
Twenty-seven.
Seven?
Seven.
We don't have to do... can we just...
Thursday, December 27th.
Just that we need to do it.
If we can get a majority, we need to show up. We can do that.
I can do it.
I can do it.
Now, I guess my question to Scott, can you get these adjusted to fit what we want them to... so we understand them very clear?
Sure. I'll do my end as long as Les agrees with my recommendations, yeah, to make sure that...
I mean, you know...
I know.
You know where we're at.
I know.
Okay. Yeah. So we're going to do this 27th?
I'm not sure.
What do you think? I don't have anything scheduled. And I don't know what's saying is going to bring me to any... I might be... twelve o'clock.
to me, I may be, twelve o'clock, I might be going south or something, you know? Mr. Lewis, uh, noon, twelve o'clock, on Thursday, December twenty-seventh.
Okay, did we clarify, make sure we have some of the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a majority here, I have a call, anyone not coming?
I'm excited to have a new...
I'm saying, I don't mind. Got that, you have, any other coming?
Nope, nope.
Let Zach, I'll get him, I'm...
I'm gonna say that I'm looking forward to representing Jeff twenty-three, Jeff nineteen, and I'm sorry to see Jeff nine go. That's all. I'm kinda sorry to see Jeff nine.
I got that, Jeff nine. Yeah, I do have something, I'm trying to find my, um, email. Um, let me find it, I had it up here.
We need to come back to you.
No, I got it. Um, at the planning and zoning meeting, when, I guess y'all know Taco Bell's gonna go in and start working in that area, um, one of the things that I was concerned about, and a couple others that people were concerned about on the board, was the fact that it's almost impossible to put sidewalks there, even though we said, "You need to put sidewalks there," and they said, "Okay, but there's a big ditch," and, and then Andy's standing there, and he said, "We're gonna be redoing that," and they said, "We'll be willing to pay for it even if we can't put the sidewalks there." So, Les said, and so did this person who is representing, uh, this business, said that in other cities, that actually have ordinances where if, if you're in a situation where you're supposed to pay for your sidewalks and you can't do it at that time, that they would donate the money to put in a fund to be used as a later date. And Les wanted to know, we wanted to go ahead and have him work on our ordinance before he worked on it, and then we said we didn't wanna do it.
I think so.
I thought that happened in another meeting, and we said, "Yes."
I don't, had no idea.
Yes.
Well, that, it makes sense.
Would that be an honor voting for us?
I guess not.
Uh, I, you'll have to let Les explain it, or explain to you how it works, 'cause I don't think that it has to be used necessarily for the sidewalk in front of that business, I think it could be used for some, yeah.
We have a sidewalk fund, that doesn't make sense.
So...
Places to put it, yeah.
But, because it could be years before it could get in front of that, so you can use it when it, money goes back into that fund to be used.
Well, it's good, it's security.
I was willing to, of course, yeah, let the building, but, uh, we are, but, I know I speak for myself here, but I'm in a strong support of public safety, I support the police station, I mean, we had a hospital here, I don't know what they were told or what they were not told, so I just want the record to show that, you know, I do support public safety and the police station, it's just disappointing that, really don't know what the intentions were, or, I hope they know that, but...
You made that quick, so, is that it? Mr. Glover?
Uh, I don't have anything but to say, congratulations, Nathan, I thought the committee you set up did, did an excellent job, and, uh, I was, I was impressed, I really was, so, that's all I got.
Mr. Owen?
We need to discuss, because we neglected to do so earlier this evening, uh, new date for the Parks Authority meetings, and I think, I think the common theme that I've heard, uh, since this evening's meeting is the fourth Monday. We changed from the second Monday because Mr. Lewis, um, had another engagement with another client at that time, uh, we tried to go to Tuesday, and that really hasn't worked out for us all that well, um, and I think most of us block out Mondays for council appointments anyway, uh, so I would suggest the fourth Monday now, at seven P M. in the council chambers, and I would say the council chambers because it's easier here, uh, it's easier, I think, for the, um, clerk's office to set up down here for records, uh, so is there any objection to the fourth Monday?
The only thing I will say is, if you can let us double-check the, the schedule for the room, because Candy's keeping a schedule now for anything after hours.
Sure.
And I don't believe there's anything, but you just gotta double-check.
May I have my first meeting, uh, January twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay.
Proper advertisement, it's at seven P M., I know...
We usually meet at six.
Six.
Excuse me, uh, six still?
Six.
Okay.
I'll do it, I just wanna check the advertisement.
No mistake, I misspoke.
Yeah, I already got my time on, I'm late.
Can you advertise it for the year?
That's what you do, yeah, at all, your meetings, your council meetings, and any other board meetings, you do one master advertisement per year, and then as you go along, if you do, 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 be, change meetings, you do several others, you do one master, kind of, at the beginning of the year, for all your events, council, and, whatever.
Um, I already voted on it, but just so I have it straight for myself, this, then with the county and Clarksville and for G I S, the county needs it for proper assessment, correct? And, for more accurate, better assessing, and we are buying into it because better assessments fell back on us and is a benefit for us.
There's more than that, though.
Than what else.
Kind of, to talk, 'cause you, you work with eight, eight...
Yeah, we use it for, like, planning and zoning when we're looking up properties, 'cause it has all the information that we need, usually, who owns the house, if we have to, 'cause we have to mail certified letters.
Okay.
Used to, used to have to take, go over to the building, fill everything, yeah, it was awful.
So, we're enhancing, we're enhancing what was there before?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just, we wasn't sure, two minutes sounded like we were funding part of the assessor's office, and that's a county function, and...
It's mapping software that you could use for mailing, segment section, and it should drive our addresses to mail information to.
And so, it's an enhancement on the thirty-nine degrees north software that's used on the web now.
Right.
Okay, that's my clarification.
Congratulations on your committee.
Thank you. Three, three quick things, first is, um, I would encourage you to read the eight things if you haven't already, because in January, we need, the council needs to start thinking about that and putting some, a group together. Um, one thing I did not do is, and I like to, I like to do this, is I like to make a motion to accept our report tonight, um, and, um, to, to work towards implementing the recommendations made by the committee, so that's a motion. Okay?
Yep, we're motion second to accept the, what you said, the...
Recommendation.
Recommendation, and work to implement them. And work to implement them. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say the same, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I meant to do that in front of the committee, I apologize, 'cause I, they, um, we need to do that. Um, the second thing is, um, I'm gonna ask if we can, um, uh, allow the clerk to purchase an upgraded laptop, because I'm told that that laptop is so old it won't do our PowerPoint presentation, that's why we took all the time to bring all the money on, and I realized I would've just given it to them, and I would've done it from now, it would've been that quick. Um, with the new software they put, that they got for this, um, recording and all that, it slows it down, and that's what the clerk asked, she said she would have made her budget, but I would, I would ask if we could take all of the council, um, special projects, because we use it.
Right, it's for us.